Approval of meeting minutes.
You want to read that thing?
Oh, where is it?
Oh, the meeting is televised, anything you say can't be recorded.
This meeting is televised and anything you say will be recorded. Okay. Approval of meeting minutes, we have for approval, March 3rd, March 10th, March 17th, and May 5th. Do I hear a motion?
You want to read through and be sure we're all eroding those times?
All right. We have everyone here for March 3rd, everyone here for May 5th, everyone here, Walter's absent on this one.
Which one was that, March?
Uh, March 10th. Okay, so, we're approving March 3rd, March 17th, and May 5th.
I read them, found them very exciting, and I moved that we approved them.
And I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then you and I were the only two here on March 10th, do I hear a motion?
I would move to approve.
I second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good job.
These have to get, these have to get, no, you've got to sign those, these are motor vehicle refunds.
And one you can't sign.
And one I can't sign. All right.
Let me move to approve this one, and then Walter, you can second it, all right? Because this one has, I presume this is yours, right? Yours on here?
Yeah.
Okay? I move to approve motor vehicle excise tax returns in the amount of $2,461.63.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have another one, a payroll, no, this is what, well, I don't think you signed this.
Mary, what does, um...
You need to just sign this.
This is a little different than usually, I get the big pile, where's the small one?
Uh, here it is.
Oh, okay.
All right. So you sign to cover that, and I'll give the...
Yeah, I'll sign it and give that to Walter.
So did you move all of number six, the real estate taxes, the motor vehicle?
Nope, nope, we're coming up to that.
Okay, one at a time, okay.
There.
Yeah, there was just the motor vehicle.
So we have a real estate tax refund for the amount of $18,228.36.
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we have another motor vehicle refund for the amount of $248.13.
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have signature of the ABCC Form 33, which is the vote that we took last week on the alcohol license, which we denied.
So I checked with the ABCC and they said that they do need written confirmation on the Form 43 that you rejected it unanimously, so that they can be prepared in case there's an appeal filed at their level.
Okay, so we just need to sign it.
Right, yes.
Yeah, we already done the votes, so...
You need to sign this, too.
You read these back, these are the excise returns.
Uh, Mabel Marble applications.
One.
One, for Athena Rollins, 16 West Street in Berlin.
When did those close?
May 5th, night of the town meeting.
So we only...
At 7 o'clock, there's only one applicant. I don't know what your wish is, do you want to proceed with just one this year and leave the balance for next year, or?
We've done that in the past.
Yeah.
Last year it's six applicants.
Yeah, that's why we do, that's why we, you know, any, any year we have one, we, we try to keep, I mean, in the past, we're not bound to it, but in the, in the past, what we've done is, you keep the, the scholarships the same and roll it over, so that if any year you, you have five or six applicants, you...
Does anybody want to look at the applicant? We have a letter from Thomas Galvin, from the police chief, recommending her for the scholarship, she wants to go into law enforcement.
I'll take a quick look, normally, we actually set aside some time to do these, but since we only have one, we can probably... And Eric Schertner? Where is she?
I think it's, uh...
Oh, Clark, Clark. And how much do we have in the fund this year?
Um, I think it was like 3,000-ish that just came in.
Okay.
So she has given her 500. She wrote in here to give her 500.
Yeah, I mean, that's typically what we do, yeah, when Walter gets back.
June just gives them, June gives them, I don't, I don't actually...
You want to take a look at that, Walter?
Sure. Is this a, oh, just a Mabel Marble?
Yeah, we have only one. The proposal was, there's no motion yet, but there's a proposal to do 500, which is typically the amount that we give in those, and we'll roll the rest over for another year, because these, sometimes we have six or seven, sometimes we have one or two, so... And I've really yet to see one that comes in that really wasn't deserving, so...
It's all right to me.
All right, then I make a motion to award a Mabel Marble scholarship in the amount of $500 to Athena Rollins of 16 West Street, a student at Assabette Valley Regional.
Nice second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a software application agreement with Vadar Systems for general ledger APAR budgeting and treasurer receipts, which is used by the accountant, three years, for three, three years, till 2017.
Is she using this now?
Yes.
So is it a renewal?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a regular...
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. There's only one copy of that?
There were two.
Oh. All right.
All right, you're signing, Tom, you're signing. $350 to Miguel Architects, from the special town meeting, Article 4, for the 1870 Town Hall Elevator. It covers a consulting meeting with Dan Barton and Selectman Thomas Andrew and the Town Hall Advisory Committee.
Move to approve? How much is it?
$350.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have Selectman's expenses, $20.16 for mileage reimbursement.
Move to approve? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That should be nearing an end now, that the box is closed, closed May 1st. There's going to be a little one for May, and then that's probably largely the end of mileage.
We have the April 2014 monthly reports from the rescue squad, the building inspector, the family food pantry, the Berlin Police Department, and the Berlin Fire Department. Has everyone read them? Have any comments on them?
I had taken a quick look at the police one, because they're my department, I haven't had a chance to do the others yet.
I haven't looked at them, but, um...
And have you looked at them?
I've looked at them.
You approve them?
Yep.
Then I approve.
Okay. We have a review of a memo on Maya insurance rates for FY15.
Formal written notification from Maya was due this week, but it hasn't shown up yet.
All right, so...
After the budget's up, yeah?
All right, so we don't have anything here?
Just my memo.
Okay.
Oh, is it on down there?
I don't know. Town Council Collections, and then we have the...
I forgot about that.
Rescue Squad charging town employees.
It should be right.
Then I have department reports.
Okay. If it's not, I can put it on, you'll actually have a memo from Maya next week.
Okay, we'll do that.
It's fine. Update on Benderson facts regarding FY14 mitigation.
Do you know where that stands, Tom?
I sent him an email, but we hadn't had, had enough chance to chat.
Is that like today, or recently?
Yes.
Okay.
Review of revised rescue squad transport billing policy for employees injured on the job, take a vote. Should we put this out?
Did you rewrite that, Tom?
Aye, no, when I saw it there, I remembered it, but...
Okay. Next week?
Yep.
Review of revised rescue squad transfer, all right, discussion regarding the ethics workshop via Town Council. Uh, I don't know what that's about. Town Council, oh, the collections and procurement?
Uh, I thought this was an actual, someone, one of you made a request for an ethics workshop.
Well, no, no, I, I just said, we, did we want to talk about it, because we talked about, sort of, ethics filing, we talked about procurements, and, you know, a number of questions that come up over the past two or three months, and, you know, places like Copeland Page will give, you know, a, you know, a seminar or a 45-minute talk on it, and I just wanted to put before the board whether we wanted to do that or not, or ask them if they would be willing to do that.
I've covered them before as a reporter, they're pretty good.
Yeah.
They condense a lot into a short window.
Sure, I mean...
And we could, we could have a town, and I'm not talking about just for the Selectman, we could have a town office explaining for that. But it was just, it was just a suggestion, huh?
Well, we have a reply from Town Council about the collections and procurement law for the rescue squad.
I don't remember what he said.
He said that. So the question was, must the town proceed with sealed bids proposals, including advertising in the state's goods and services to the Boulevard? All right, so the, the, the subject of this is that the rescue squad is owed $150,000 from patients, some percentage is several years old, the squad's billing company does not follow up on outstanding debts outside of soft collection communications to debtors. The rescue squad chief hopes to contract with one named collection agency, but the town accountant believes procurement law 30B requires sealed bids or proposals since the agent's commission would likely exceed 25,000. So the question is, must the town proceed with sealed bids proposals, including advertising in the state's goods and services bulletin? And he says, in my opinion, the procurement of collection services to be furnished by a collection agent or agency is subject to public bidding under chapter, under general law, Chapter 30B. If the contract price is estimated to exceed 100,000, you're required to advertise the procurement in the goods and services bulletin. But since the price is not estimated to exceed 100, in his opinion, you don't need to advertise any goods and services. Does that high, a hybrid approach was suggested at the Selectman's giving, giving the named agent 20 cases to see how well she performs. He notes that if the contract price is estimated to be between 10 and 24,999, you're required to solicit three quotes and sealed bids, three quotes, and you have to get sealed bids if it's estimated at 25,000 or more. And further note that general law, Chapter 30B, Section 13 prohibits the town from entering into a change order that increases the contract price beyond 25 percent. Thus, if the value of the remaining cases in an increase of 25 percent or more of the contract price, the town will not be able to enter into a change order providing the additional cases to the contractor. In light of this restriction, the town may wish to include all the cases in the scope of work for the original contract.
So in other words, what they're saying is, you can't sort of piece, piece this out, that you could go out with a bundle that was even less than 10,000, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Where they estimated, right?
Yeah.
But then, if you wanted to, if you, if you wanted to award further stuff, then you'd be stuck in the bidding process, because that would be...
So it sounds like it needs to get three quotes and sealed bids if it's going to be more than 25,000, or sealed bids.
Well, and it was 150,000?
Yep.
And what's the general tariff that people charge on that, 10 percent?
Thirty, 30 percent.
30 percent, okay. That sounds like three sealed bids, then.
Yep.
I will advise the rescue chief.
When will we advertise? Will we advertise?
We don't have to advertise.
No, we don't advertise.
We don't have to advertise, but we...
So how do you, how do you seek bids, just call people on?
We, we can advertise on cable, we can advertise, the key is that we don't have to do the formal advertisement in the state publication.
You can advertise the item.
But, so we've got to let people know that we're interested.
Exactly.
Uh, let's see, what's next here? Do you want to take a vote on an ethics workshop via Town Council, or do you want to put that off, or?
I think the, the thing at this point would be just to see whether Mary or I or somebody else can call a Copeland Page, see if they offer such a thing and get information on it.
Okay.
Does that seem okay?
Yeah.
And again, my, yeah, and again, my feeling would be if we're going to do something like that, we, we do it as town, you know, officers and department meetings and everybody...
Yeah.
Okay.
So item 12 and 13 are discussion of a job description and compensation for the electrical inspector, and then one about the part-time land use clerk. So Mary did a compensation survey, right?
Yes.
So Berlin currently pays 95, the inspector gets 95 percent of receipts, and it goes via offset receipts. Bolton pays a flat, they have a population of 4,900, they pay a flat monthly rate regardless of receipts.
And what, do we know what the rate is?
Does not appear, do we...
Some people gave more information than others, literally what they answered, I dropped into that grid, so...
Okay. Um, let's see. Carlisle has 4,800 people, they pay $35 an hour for three hours a day, three-hour minimum for being called in for inspections, if no inspections in a day, no pay, no set office hours, building commissioner clerk processes permits, inspectors come in as needed to get paperwork for inspections. Of the fees that they do collect, 50 percent goes to the general fund and 50 percent goes to the revolving account that they get paid out of.
God, we're more generous than Carlisle, one of the richest towns in the state.
Let's see, are there any, well, Charlton, 1,300, population revolving fund, and the fees paid, the fees cover his pay, the town adds a 10 percent admin fee.
So they get 110 percent?
Right.
Okay.
Kohasset, a stipend for electrical inspector, though the plumbing inspector gets $25 in inspection.
You can test on that.
All right. And Franklin pays an hourly rate, Gardner with a population of 20,000 pays 25.67 per hour, Grafton has an hourly rate, 30 per hour, Hadley with a population of 4,700 pays 90 percent of receipts, the town keeps 10 as administration, Halifax with a population of 7,500 pays 80 percent of receipts, Harvard with a population of 6,500 pays 80 percent of fees, I presume receipts, Ludlow, 21,000, they pay for 25 hours per week with a pay range of 20 to 25 dollars. Merrimack, population 6,300, they have six paid office hours, and then 35 percent to the inspectors, 5 percent to code enforcement fund, 25 percent to the general fund, and then 35 percent which funds the, in a revolving account, to fund 35 percent to the inspectors. Northbridge pays monthly stipends, undetermined, Norton pays $18.06 an hour, Paxton, 4,500, and I'm reading out the populations that are even somewhat close to ours, pays a stipend, Plainville, 8,200, 80 percent of receipts for electrical, also plumbing and building, goes to the inspectors, Southampton, 5,800, 80 percent of receipts go to the inspectors, Southwick, 9,500, 75 percent of receipts go to inspectors, Sterling, 7,800, $35 per inspection, Stirbridge, 9,500, $40 per inspection, plus $100 per month for fuel, and there is an administrative assistant to do paperwork, Swamskut, 13,800, there's a $22,000 a year stipend, Topsfield, 6,000, 12 hours per week, 27 or 28 per hour, Westbridge Water, 6,900, is an $11,500 annual salary, plus 1,500 per year in travel and phone stipend, Westbrookfield, 3,700, there's a $4300 annual stipend, plus 500 in expenses, plus 200 a year in backup assistance, Rentham, 11,000, $30 per inspection, plus an $1,800 annual stipend, so there's quite a...
Quite a variety.
Quite a variety of ways they do it.
Yeah, you know, I need a weakness study.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we need to really, you know, we have an electrical inspector, and he gets his fees, and look at what those fees are, but it'd be interesting to look at, is he inspecting a plug for a washer, or is he inspecting a solar farm, or, you know, it's, look at that bind we're in, or in the bind, but I mean, got a $30,000 fee for the solar panels, and we knocked that down, but still, I heard from a couple of reliable people, it doesn't involve 40 hours of total work, so, get a little study on it, do it before I'd want to, you know, that information.
Do you want Mary to send this to you?
Yes. Yeah, I would.
The, um, fee chart?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think actually it's also good, as we, you know, to look at it over the next few weeks, in combination with the expectation for them getting administrative support from the secretary, because that's, that's another aspect to the job, right?
Does the position come with benefits, too?
No.
No.
All right, the next item was, uh...
No, and the receipts don't, don't count for Worcester County Retirement either, as we discovered, it's a Thorburn, so, yeah.
So we need to write up a job description for the Inspector Land Use Clerk, since it was passed a town meeting last week?
Mm-hmm.
Do you want me to pull something together, or?
Please. I think that'd be good, but then I think we ought to have the, you know, have these, either have the inspectors in or run it by them.
They're coming in on the 19th.
Actually.
If I can run it past them in advance, also the, maybe the land use boards, too. I don't know that they're all going to be able to meet that quickly to review it.
Okay. Come on up.
Oh, okay.
Hello?
Senator, how are you?
Senator, nice to see you.
Yeah.
Thanks for having me.
Yes.
Hi, how you doing? Mary?
Yes.
Do you want to, do you want to join us on this side of the table, since we're filming this?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
That's good.
Here, why don't I move over and maybe you ride a place here, yeah, you can sit right there.
Cool.
Oh, yeah, better, better camera focus.
Well, thank you, everyone.
All right.
So, I appreciate you seeing and working with my schedule, we did try to get in here the past few weeks, but between the budget and debate two weeks ago and then other family commitments. I did want to talk, or more listen, on the whole pipeline issue from Kinder Morgan Tennessee Pipeline, because that, I think, has raised some questions. And just to make clear for the board and for the public, I have not met with those people yet, I was pretty ticked when they put out some press release, they've listed several members of the House and Senate saying they had briefed us, they have not been in the series. I will give them this, they've reached out, and again, it's just a scheduling thing, because they don't have permanent representatives here, they do have representatives that, government affairs representatives, but they, they don't have full-time personnel, I, I believe, so to set up meetings, they have to fly in. So I'm seeing them on Wednesday.
Okay.
So, most of what I know is from the media and from the internet, so I wanted to kind of come and get educated as to what they've offered you so far, and basically build a list of questions that I can ask them when I go in on Wednesday. And so, you know, I know they've got two different pipelines that are being proposed, there are a lot of arguments that Massachusetts and New England's energy needs aren't being adequately met, or potentially could be at risk as we go into the future, and that they've met with members of the Senate delegation, they've met with the governor and his staff, and no one that I've seen so far has taken a staunch stand for or against this yet, it's just, because it's, we're still in an educational process. So, what I need is ammunition, I need information to go in and, and from anything you know so far, ask them, okay, how are you going to affect my communities? Because it's not just, of the towns I represent, it's going to affect Berlin, Boylston, and Northboro.
Yeah.
So, that being said, do you, I know a fellow came to see you, but was looking for easements?
He was looking for information, well, first they came into the assessor's office, and we have a computer in the corner, and they got all the information about what land they wanted to look at without ever talking to any of the assessors. And so, we kept hearing bits and pieces about people being approached by this person to sign permission over to let them survey their land, and nobody knew anything about it. So Mary, I believe, finally got him to give us a map, is that where she went to go get the map?
Uh, yeah, actually, she went, if you remember, there was a state statute that seemed to suggest that there couldn't be eminent domain over parklands and reservations and so on, and many of the parcels, so she's getting that because I wanted to be, yeah...
Article 96?
Yeah, yeah, and so we were curious about, about that one, so she was just running, running to get that.
So there's a lack of information about what's going on, that's the first part, and the way that they're doing it is very, you know, high behind...
Would you help them create a detailed map of Berlin?
Absolutely.
And then Walter can talk about, they're going to go through, it looks like they're going through all of our land that doesn't have any houses, and a lot of it is conservation land.
They always, well, yeah, we spend money to save land, and you know what Article 97 is, the Constitution of the State, they're not supposed to alter the land, but they look like they looked at the town, the green sections on it, just ran it through. Actually, Berlin is literally, probably, it goes right through the town, not a corner or over there, anything else, and it goes through some of our biggest and nicest conservation lands, so we'd be interested on, the other thing, if you look at the map, you can imagine it following roads, but I don't know, maybe it costs more to put the roads back together than to go through the woods, but they could almost follow certain streets without going through some of the big areas, you know? So have they actually been in to see your board yet, or just poker on the assessor's office?
No, they've spoken to Mary, and they, they, well, they were in the assessor's office, but I don't think that they gave them any information. Mary managed to get a map out of them.
And they did, if I remember correctly, they did suggest coming in on very short notice in May, because they had a cancellation of another town, so, but we did not want to do that, because we really couldn't get the word out.
They wouldn't give a list of the actual homeowners affected.
And, um...
So this is the guest...
So I think they're due to come in in June?
They're, they're looking at June dates.
them to set up a notice, so they're going to come in, do a presentation, a public presentation in June.
Now, Tom, is that, can I see the yellow map?
Of course.
Because, so they're coming out of Bolton.
There's a fellow from Bolton.
They're coming out of Bolton and, and coming across over Wataquata, and then here's the Burling part. But there appears to be an already existing pipeline that comes out of Bolton that goes into Clinton. So I'm not sure, why can't they just take this and continue that on? Why do they need a brand-new one? So here's the existing pipeline in Bolton, that's been there from like the sixties.
That's down by one ten.
It crosses, well, but-
Well, this, you know, this here's Water Street, no, it's Coast Street.
Oh, take it.
Oh, there's Water Street, okay. Because they're doing all the construction on Water Street now, putting new gas lines in there, but that's, that's local, it's national group.
And, and actually, this, it was, it was Chapter one sixty-four, Section seventy-five C, which deals with eminent domain. And looking at, and I'll give you, I'll leave you with a copy of this, but it was this section here that when we were looking at it, we wondered, because it says, "No lands of rights away or easements therein shall be taken by eminent domain under the provisions of this section in any public way, public place, park or reservation, or within the location of any railroad," and then they say something about public, you know, there's an exception to the exception for public ways. But this seemed to suggest that the eminent domain provisions would not apply to conservation lands and parklands, which certainly puts the town in the driver's seat on that, so that, I could leave you with that one.
We hope. Who's your town council? Have you talked about that?
Yes, actually.
And they gave you that?
Yeah.
That's good, I hope that holds, because I've found other, and not to be-
They actually did comment on that section, they just said this is being the control of it, when we looked at it, we were like, huh, that's interesting.
Too, 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 too important, they say. FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory-
But that's for an interstate pipeline, which is the north one, that goes from New York to Drakeet.
And this is all-
That's, that would be under FERC.
Okay.
But, but I just talked to somebody who said, who denied that giving them a preliminary release, and she said that she just got another letter from them that basically said, if you don't let us, we're going to go to the state and get, which will force you to let us on your property. No, this is in Burling.
Yeah, I got one too.
So here.
Yeah. From two sixty-four Linden Street. About two months ago, a stranger came down my driveway, handed me a letter, an attachment, and asked me to sign it. I looked at it, and was asking me to sign for permission to come on my property to survey. A week or two ago, I got another one, and I think the language implies just what you stated, asking me to sign again. I don't ever intend to sign one of these things, ever.
Would, would you mind leaving us with a copy?
I don't know.
Is this copy we can keep, or should we make it?
This is actually the original.
Okay.
You want to make a copy, you're welcome to do that. May I say two other things?
Yes.
I don't know if you all saw the article in the Worcester Telegram, dated May tenth. The headline, "U.S. Watchdog: Pipeline Safety Oversight Is Not Adequate." First sentence in the article, "Federal agency responsible for making sure states effectively oversee safety in that of natural gas and other pipelines is failing to do their job." Couple of paragraphs down to the article. So they did a survey, all right, and the survey was prompted by the fact that three years ago, the gas pipeline, just like the type we're talking here this evening.
San Bruno?
Yes.
Yes.
Blew up, killed eight people, harmed fifty-eight, wiped out a developer. And that's what prompted the investigation. So, be aware of it. Look, just wanted to bring to your attention. Back in the fifties, when I was a wee lad, down in the town of Milville where I grew up, which is only forty-five minutes from here, I believe it's the same company, they put a line through the town of Milville, beautiful forested area, cut a two-hundred-foot wide path on the way, put a three-foot pipeline in. Some, ten or fifteen years later, whatever it was, they put a second line in, cut more trees down. Then apparently they wanted to make more money, so they decided to lease this pipeline, so high tensions could go through, so now there's a high tension running down the line. So you've got this beautiful swath of four hundred feet of the ugliest damn scar on the earth that you can imagine. It's absolutely awful. And of course, they go in periodically and spray all kinds of herbicides to keep the vegetation down. It's a disaster. It's forty-five minutes from here. Go take a look at it, it's just beyond Southwood's Wild Animal Farm. It's awful. Town of Milville.
What, off of Route sixteen?
It's off of Route sixteen. So you've got to go through Mendon, and you go down Milville Road, it's before you get into the center of Milville. It's called the Chestnut Hill District, it's rural like this, and then the center of the town is down by the river, the White Soul River. But it's an awful scene, so, we don't need it.
Do we know how many people, do we have any idea how many people have got letters like this?
He estimated originally that it was going to touch forty-eight parcels.
This is the fellow that was in the assessor's office?
This is Philip Chipman, who is the land agent for Tennessee Gas Pipeline. He has the same address as Tennessee Gas Pipeline, which is in Agawam.
You know, the irony is, we don't even have gas in town.
We won't, from this.
I requested information.
Everybody else need to sign this?
He gave me that note and another notice, and I called and requested he gave me the map. I couldn't read the map. I called three times. She said she could inform me of who my neighbors were that were being affected by this as well, because of informational restrictions. And he also told my neighbor, without telling me or even knocking on the door, that they had already decided to come through my property so that the neighbor might as well sign up because it was already going through mine. So it's a kind of, he said, she said, without anybody actually being aware of it. I finally, on the third attempt, got a map that actually showed my property, and they're taking, they're going up, up to five house lots, they're taking three, because it's open space. So they're just going up the open field. And I happen to not be one that, that the pipeline has not been proposed to go directly through my property, and because I'm just a few feet over the two-hundred-feet radius, I don't get the courtesy of any kind of letter or anything like that, but it's right behind my house, it's going to affect my property values, and, you know, I don't even have the chance to say yes or no. No, they're not even telling the neighbors.
If, again, not having met with these people yet, the risk of showing yours, do they offer compensation?
It was very, when I said, excuse me, you're taking three house lots and a road, my property is basically worthless now, will they pay compensation?
Yeah, they'll offer you ten cents on the dollar, because they know what they have in their back pocket, I'm in the domain.
And who wants to buy a house?
So they're not going to, they're not going to give you a fair retail price, that's for sure.
With the pipeline going through, it herbicides, a swath going right through, literally the town, they will not replace stone walls, they put up a gate to keep dirt bikes out, but they maintain that they want access to it, so any kind of the rural, gone, we have all stone walls, they're not going to put them back.
I suppose we see in Grohms too, because in the past, they've been using helicopters to monitor this one down Milville. As a kid, they were always flying a low altitude to check whatever they check. So, that'll be another fine thing, flying them over town.
They also came through Northbridge, like, late eighties, early nineties, and right through farmland.
Oh, sure.
That's why it's easy to get through, right?
And they went right behind my house and cut a big wide splash right through there, and blasted as they were doing it all summer.
And just fully pushed the boltless to the side, just leave it all, you know, in the jumble.
And we do have some farmland that's going through. It's going right through, it's farmland, and he can't do anything on, on it, it's, you know, they're going to herbicide it, they're going to, so now he's lost a field.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing is it's going to be really important to talk to them about the sort of intrusiveness, the condition, the maintenance, the, you know, all of that, because this doesn't sound like it's somebody with a ditch witch and a, and a three-inch pipe going through the woods.
No, it's insignificant.
And the way that they're doing it is so underhanded, yes.
Do you have any options on this?
Well, I would assume that they, when they come to town in June, which I understand they're going to do.
Do we know, is that in front of your board?
Yeah.
What's the date on that?
Well, we haven't got it yet, but we'll let everybody know. Pack it up and have our list of questions ready, so that would be a good time to pin them down with everything from the herbicide questions to repairing stone walls to other things. Whether they can then lease it out for high-tension lines in addition to the gas lines or what, you know?
If you go on some of the Facebook sites, and doing some of this, this North County Sustainability Center, and I know Bolton has got some stuff out there, and it sounds like they, they invite Kinder Morgan people to come, but they don't show up, is what it sort of sounded like with both of the two venues that were going to be held, so.
So they invited people, they didn't show up?
I saw something online, it's like, Pepperell, Pepperell or Dunstable tonight, or Summer presented there, I saw that online this afternoon.
That's the big three-foot one going from New York.
And that's what I, I'm trying to determine the, no.
Ours is one foot, and it's coming from Bolton through.
And it starts in Bolton?
Yes, Bolton already has a pipeline that was put in in the sixties.
Where does-
That's this green line here, this is the existing pipeline.
Where does that get fed from?
I don't know, the metro.
Pittsburgh.
Well, because I like the idea, I was concerned of some of the research that one of my staffers did on the FERC involvement here, that, and their apparent federal authority that can override everything, but if this is-
If this is intrastate.
Intrastate, where, yeah, where, then the state, that, I think, gives us some more strength to be able to deal with this.
I was told today that they planned on filing with FERC after the surveys were complete, by this Philip Chipman. I, I don't know if I believe him on that.
It seems like- Well, there's a question we need on the agenda when they come in here, whether they view this project, whether they view this project as subject to work, and we'll come to our own conclusions too, but.
It seems like if they filed with FERC, and they were on the docket, there would be more information available to all of us.
You're meeting with them Wednesday, or?
Wednesday. Wednesday afternoon.
Did I, we received something from the MACC, Mass Association of Conservation Commission, you followed it towards, had like fourteen attachments to it, I looked at the first one, I didn't, I can send it to your, your email, and you can give it to your staff to review, I didn't, what's that, Mary?
It's in the package, and it's the MACC's letter to Governor Patrick Ossoff.
Yeah.
Judy, be towards the end, if you want me to flip through and get it for you? I can, I can give it to you right now.
Okay.
This is to your counsel.
Isn't it in the document?
Yes, this is mine, yes.
Oh, did you print the whole thing out, Mary?
You know, here.
Well, anyway, they-
It was to Mary. Only she knows where it's hidden in that.
We'll get it to your staff electronically anyway.
Well, yeah, we could have it, still looking to prep for Wednesday meeting. No, it's, it's, it's disheartening that they've chosen to, you know, I mean, maybe their explanation would be they want to do their due diligence before they present themselves, but it raises more questions than maybe it needs to, by the fact that they didn't identify themselves before they could. That bothers me, they didn't identify themselves, that they're going to be in town while in the assessor's office poking around, and so it leads to further, something like this leads to alarm on people's parts anyway, and justly so, and the fact that they have, apparently, and I don't want to cast dispersions, I don't know these people, have not been incredibly upfront yet, just adds to that, I don't like that. You know, I'll give them this, they have reached out to my office, but, and when I asked for material to prep for tonight, they really didn't send me, us much more than what you can find on their website, and, which my office had found anyways, and we did a little research, we spoke to Congressman, Congresswoman Songas' office to see, well, their involvement with this, they're kind of at the same level we are, they've been briefed preliminarily, but it's, it's, so there's many, 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 many more questions out there than answers that have been offered yet, so.
Yeah, there's, there's not a lot, the, the, the association is registering its strong objection, and it certainly does seem that they believe that it will be a FERC project, as you, as you look there.
My impression, and I'm a lawyer, but I'm not a, really an environmental lawyer, but from the research that we've been done, that we've done, is that they're believed, their argument would be that FERC, a FERC license, a FERC approval trumps all. I wonder, and, and we can ask our lawyers in the House and ask Copeland Page, is that true? Does it trump conservation land, state conservation land? Because this, they're not reinventing the wheel here, this is the first time they've come up against these issues.
Yep.
I'd be surprised if one of them go through conservation land in Bolton, too, they have a lot of conservation land over there.
Do you, there's a fellow from Bolton here, was on the phone with Mr. Lowe today, but I didn't, we were on some other subjects. Bolton's, I don't represent Bolton, but a lot of obviously joint interests between the towns. Do you know how many properties in Bolton have been touched by this?
I have a larger map than what they sent to me, that I can see about twenty-five parcels, and there's, of the two sheets that take up Bolton, that's one of the sheets, so, I'd say, the same, probably forty-eight, fifty parcels, it appears, I haven't seen the whole thing.
Right through lands, not along roadways, or?
Right, right. And I kind of understand some of the, it appears that they, at least in Bolton, that they've avoided some conservation land. They've gone around Wataquata Hill, which would probably be difficult to put the pipeline over that, so it appears that they've done some studies, it doesn't go right through our town center, it's offset a bit.
There's Main Street in Bolton, and there's Wataquata and Road.
Here it runs through a lot of conservation.
In Bolton?
Land in Burling.
In Burling.
The proposal.
I have shown her over the years to put those graphics through.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't just hear.
Well, I just mentioned, I have bought conservation land as well as five or six of my, my neighbors', and instead of going through the conservation land, it goes right through our backyards.
Interesting. It seems that they seem to have taken a slightly different approach when they crossed the border into Burling.
Has anybody mentioned the Department of Public Utilities? When I spoke to Mr. Chipman today, he, I would say, threatened that if we didn't agree to sign the, the survey permission form, he was going to submit everybody's name to the Department of Public Utilities, for whatever that means, I don't know what that means.
That's, that's how they would get permission, without you giving them permission, I believe, from what, Red?
Is that a different, or an independent body?
That's the state.
Like being the state equivalent for.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, my attitude is-
Because at least there, I would think that there'd be some level of an appeal process, and that you'd have, you know, obviously, we can advocate with state agencies.
I'd get some information, too. If they have to file.
And, you know, they're, you saw it many years ago, they're, they're no, they're not new at this, this is something they've been doing.
My concern is, is how many people have already signed that without really knowing what they're signing.
Right.
Because we don't know who's gotten the letters.
Right.
And is there some way that we can let the town know to come forward?
Well, the item carried an article on it, Marsha.
Pardon?
Both the item and the telegram have covered it to some degree, I don't know how you get the word out.
I just, I just-
I know one of my neighbors- Pardon?
Both the item and a telegram have covered it to some degree, I don't know how you get the word out.
I just, I just.
I know one of my neighbors says, oh, yeah, I don't care, go ahead, as long as I get the wood when they cut the trees, you know. So, there's some people that, you know.
Well, I would point out that we're, we're sort of doing this now, it's, this is going to be on cable, so I'll take a minute to say, anyone who has received, you know, a letter or signed a letter, yeah, if you would, would, would send a note to the, to the selectmen's office, that would help us in assessing what the situation is. And watch this space, because there will be a meeting in June to, with, with representatives of, of the proponent.
I guess what I would like to find from you is what rights does the town have?
Right.
I mean, can they just come in here and do whatever they want, just, I mean, I know the state, the articles I read about this sounded like the state was telling them, yes, put this pipeline in, the, the big pipeline that's going from New York to Drake it, we need more gas.
Right.
So I feel like it's kind of stacked against us already, because the state is the one appealing to Kinder Morgan to put in the big pipeline.
No, that is, that was one of the themes, one of the policies of the, of all Patrick administration, and it was energy independence of Massachusetts and, you know, from Massachusetts to New England, but Massachusetts in that, because, you know, as we've seen of the difficult winters in the past, we, there, there have been issues arisen, there's people that don't get their deliveries, but it's, it's, it's never gonna be an easy process. I'd like to know, and, and so that's what we'll find out, once I'll meet with them, I'll try to get answers to this, I would hopefully, once, Mary, I'm sure you'll let us know, once you said that meeting's getting set.
Yes.
I, I'll endeavor, depending on scheduling and everything, to get back with you, with your board before that public meeting, so we can work and, and have a, you know, I'll be on the same page, and obviously I would try to be here for that, the meeting when they come and do their presentation. Yeah, it would be nice, they're, they're not a public agency or covered by any, both meeting laws or anything like that that I could see, it would be nice if we could do a Freedom of Information Act request to find out whose properties are being affected in the town, but perhaps that's part of their strategy, I don't know, to kind of almost like a divide and conquer type of thing. As you say, you know, there's a young lady back there, she said, you know, some people are, I could see my parents doing that, you know, oh, yeah, come on, you know, you know, they don't, they think everybody's, are as good-natured and goodwill as, as most of us are. They're not saying that these people aren't, but it's, I get, I'm not appreciative of the way they've gone about this so far.
Not to sound negative, but you're getting, I'm getting the feeling that's inevitable.
I hope not. I hope, the problem is, is like anything in life, when there's, when there are unknowns, and there are so many unknowns here, creates anxiety, and when the fact that they come to town, they don't identify themselves, they do them poking around, of course, in a small town, you know, rumors are gonna start flying, when they come to your house and say, come to that fellow's house and say, well, you know, sign, we'll just go to the DPU, that's not the way to do business, that's not the way to act, that's not the way to make people feel good about homes and property that they've invested thirty, forty, fifty years in, that, you know, raised their families at, that they're counting on, you know, house lots potentially that could be.
Or, I'm thinking, okay, I put the road in, and you brought the three houses in next week, but they don't own the property yet.
Yeah.
But what's that gonna do, you can't sell it to someone who's gonna have a pipeline in their backyard.
Right. So, no, I, 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 I wouldn't go about with that feeling of inevitability, we've, we've got options here, we've got opportunities to advocate, to change the route, to make it, maybe make it follow the road, if they've gotta come through the town, then how can it be less impactful? Can they follow the roadways as opposed to people's property? Let's, this is, in my mind, this is an issue, an initial proposal, and, and we still haven't even known all the parameters of it, we haven't had our opportunity to fire back, and, and that's what we're here for, you know, you're well represented with your board here, I hope, hopefully you think you're well represented with me, and, and our job's to fight and advocate and make sure that your sides get heard, and it's, it will be contentious, it'll probably get more contentious before it's over than, than less, I mean, let's, let's be prepared for that. These, these are big companies, we've seen their, you know, the, with years and years of.
And they've done it before.
Of, of, of development behind them. Hopefully, they, our, hopefully first impressions are incorrect and they turn out to be good corporate citizens and we can work with them and, and, and they're willing to work with us and make this, if they have to come through our towns around here, then make it as least impactful as possible.
The representative that came to my property said that they were planning to come down Ball Hill Road, and I have bought Ball Hill Road, and they're gonna come down the right-hand side, but then they need fifty feet on each side of that.
I think that, that, I think that's a federal regulation, a federal safety regulation, to kind of, to avoid issues as to what happened out in California, San Bruno, again, not being an engineer, I don't wanna speak to it, but, yeah, I mean, like you saw when you were a kid, what, two hundred feet on each side? It's, it's outrageous.
And it's, it's wide enough since they put the second line in, plus the high tension there.
It's two acres wide.
Yeah.
Representative, so you're meeting with them Wednesday, is it just, you, you got a private meeting with them, or?
Well, they're gonna come and brief me, you wanna come?
No, but I, so you must have a bunch of questions, what are I getting at, could you, will you send us an email?
I will, and Aaron Stein, who's from my office, has also been taking notes, he'll be sitting in.
Okay, great.
And, and I do have another staffer, Laura Crowley, who's been tracking us and doing research on it. So we'll, we'll do a brief, we'll do a download, we'll send you an email after it, and I'll also, as I say, try to get in before their meeting with, their presentations at the town, so we can all be able to.
And your next office is in Boston or in, or locally here?
At the State House, yeah.
Yeah, I might, I might come into that.
What time's it at, three-thirty?
Two.
Two? You know where the place is, you still remember?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not.
I'm sure you can handle it all yourself, I'm not worried about that, but I could just get it firsthand.
It's two.
Two o'clock, okay, all right. Yeah, so, come down and represent the board, I think I will, sure, okay.
Does anybody else in the audience have any questions?
We talked about options a moment ago, is this something that a simple petition with enough signatures could do something about?
I mean, I'm never one to, to say no to citizen activity, grassroots activity, I think that's the, that's the foundation of our republic, so I, I would never say no, I'd say absolutely, any, any venue, be it this meeting, meeting with me, my advocating for you, or something like that, any venue to get your opinion heard, as long as it's civil and, and, and good natured and, 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 and a deliberate debate, I, I have no problem with, I, I think you, that's the core of our society, so, sure, I think any effort to get your voice heard along those lines, because that, that will also drive the local discussion, and as the other young lady over there was saying, you have some very friendly people, don't, don't think anything of it, and then day late and a dollar short, they, they've signed something and then, boy, they're wishing later on they didn't, it, it also would help, no matter what happens in the end of the project, it helps educate the rest of the, the public, because say there's forty-eight properties affected here, but they, they all probably have bought at least two other properties, so that's a hundred and fifty properties, a minimum that are gonna be affected here, and pretty soon, you know, a significant portion of the town gets affected, and, and you want, even people whose properties aren't affected, you want educated and to be supportive of you in this, be it in Burling or Bolton or, or Northboro or Boylston, the towns around here that are really affected.
And are there alternate routes being investigated simultaneously?
I have no knowledge of that yet, that's a question I intend on asking on Wednesday, and, so I don't, I, I can't ask that one way or another.
Yeah, I would just reiterate what you said earlier, the meeting, that the stuff that comes down to Clinton already.
Which is this one?
Really appears to me like a logical connection point, instead of coming through Burling and Bolton and.
Exactly.
Why that line continues, right?
It's a question worth asking.
Yep. And I know how most of conservation, the Autobahn Society, everybody, how they related to it, has the Farm Bureau come up with anything, or the Department of Agriculture, how they feel about it going through all the farmland, too?
They, not to me, and I stay in pretty frequent touch with the Farm Bureau, in, in the Worcester County Farm Bureau, and, and Davidian in Northboro was the president for the Longtown Office, still is, he was until like last year, he was at Ag Day at the State House a couple of weeks ago, so no, they have not brought it up to me at all. But again, I, I think, what, what's your name?
Pat Jackson.
Pat, I think, I think a lot of it is, is, the word isn't, is not trickled far enough yet, or, which is, I think, another good result, if you do start a petition process, it helps get the word out. So a lot, a lot of impacted parties, and I'm, I'm not looking for business, we have plenty of it is, but I haven't heard from anybody in Northboro or Boylston yet.
I'll call Brad Mitchell tomorrow at the Farm Bureau.
Thanks, thanks, that would be good.
I'll bring it to his attention.
Because I deal with those, those people a lot.
Yeah, I only know about it because I happen to see it on the local Facebook page, and other than that, I would not have known, so, I mean, I'm not directly affected, but I'm concerned because of the conservation land being ruined and things like that.
They have a tremendous quality of life here, and I actually commented to Aaron today, I said, they've got it right in Burling, development adding to the local tax base, but it's on the edges of the town, not really, you know, obviously it's had an effect traffic-wise, but it's not really affecting large, other large swaths of the town, you don't wanna change that, you've got something special going on here.
We're on the top of this hill, all right, it's completely different than it is down in the center, you know, it's.
Right.
It's like it's another part of the world up there, it's untouched completely, that's the way we wanna leave it.
Right.
I own a farm, the Rainbows have a farm up there, okay, that's the way we wanna leave it.
Well, we're required to make that happen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just, a different subject, man, if I could just, very quickly, next time I come back, I'll, I'll give you a full brief on the budget, because the Senate will probably be close to being done by then, but one thing that should be, hopefully will be a positive impact for the Burling-Boylston School District, is that the foundation formula hasn't been reviewed in, since two thousand and one, and of course, you know, it's impacting both the towns in, in negative ways, you're not, you're being forced to pay somewhat more than what statutorily you should be required to, so that's, part of the House budget is requiring that the foundation budget formula will be reviewed in this fiscal year, so hopefully by the time we talk, in the next, as we prepare for the next fiscal year, we'll have some good news about support for the Burling-Boylston School District.
That's great.
So, okay, thank you, I appreciate you getting me in, we will give you a report after Wednesday, I'll plan on being here in a near-term meeting, and then we'll hopefully work together as we prepare for the June event.
Thanks a lot.
Can I take this, too?
Oh, yeah.
Can he have this one?
Even if just a little copy of it.
Yeah.
And this, the Mr. Wexler's letter, yeah.
Okay, yes.
Do you want me to do it?
No, I can do it.
Hey, you want me to do it?
You can all do it.
Copying machine.
All right. Well, thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Walter and Tony, thank you. If you wanna come down.
All right.
I mean, I'll let you know.
And Walter, if you can't make it, let me know, because I, I work right at post office.
Always something.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, please. Good, thanks, thanks for your participation.
There you go, that's not great.
All right, none of this, yeah.
All right, thanks, thanks a lot.
Thanks very much.
I think they hand me back, it's a man with, yeah, one of those.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks a lot, good to see you.
All right. I was thinking, well, the court that was missing a form at Boylston. Okay, Patricia Jackson. Anyway, we have certified mail from the National Grid Fleet Vegetation Strategy Specialist.
Same idea.
They're going to be carrying out late winter, spring mechanical control, cut surface or basal treatment, a summer selective foliage treatment.
The basal treatment has a three-year span.
Hmm. Um, no herbicide application will occur before the conclusion of the forty-five-day YOP review period, I'm not sure what, oh, yearly operational plan map, so you can go to a National Grid website and look at the posted copies of the vegetative management plan, also known as VNP. Town insurance for FY15.
Yeah, that's the, that's.
That's the one that I was looking for before?
Yeah.
Oh, so this is someone asking if we wanna look at someone besides Maya.
That's a salesman who also wants to know if we wanna shop away from Maya.
Okay. I think that our treasurer should look at that.
Oh, okay.
Crown Victoria Auction, it's going to close this coming Sunday night, and it needs to be put on the agenda for Monday to vote on it, but I put the Crown Vic on the nissibid.com, and I put it on at five hundred dollars and it's up to thirteen hundred.
Really?
Yeah.
All right.
Something you want, your gas, Russell?
Don't say that.
Yeah, really?
We're trying to sell it.
Yeah, it's a great car. It's a fantastic car.
So next Monday night, if the auction will close and then you need to.
The wet bar in back is fantastic. Well, it actually looks like I have some time that afternoon, if you can't make.
You know, just do it.
Okay.
Because that'll save me going in, it's supposed to be a lousy day, I, I figured I'd do it, we'd make a trip in of Austin, but it's supposed to be raining, so.
That'd be, that's fine.
That's fine.
Because it takes me like ten minutes to walk it there.
That makes sense.
All right.
I don't know where I am on this miscellaneous. It's, I think there's someone from the prior week that's lingering in there.
All right, well, we have a letter, board of selectmen letter to Maguire regarding the Victoria Maguire versus the Mass Works, and we signed this last week.
Yeah, real short. They were gonna come before you tonight, but they're putting it off for two weeks with an update.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I'm not sure what this is, Suasco, oh, this is walking, Cheryl Duggan walking in Suasco has found all this trash, and she wants to set up a meeting with the warden, which is, oh, the fire warden. There's pictures of all this trash.
Is that algae, or?
It's, it's allergy now.
Geez, it's bad. My wife has it.
Randall Road Surface Water Runoff Concern, all right, you're the vice chair.
Yeah, I take over.
That, that resident wanted to organ, see if the selectmen would organize a neighborhood meeting regarding runoff that she's suffering on her, on her property, and Walter wrote back, you know, it sounds like it might be a personal or a, you know, inter-property matter, but she also says that it's affecting the street out in front of the house, Randall Road.
Well, I, I think what we've done in the past is somebody will bring in, you know, pictures and come in and.
Ask for more detail.
Yeah, and, and come in and, and make an appointment with us, that's usually been the best way to.
Okay.
To deal with it, and then if it's appropriate, I mean, it's always on, it's always on the agenda, so anybody can come in, but if it's appropriate, then to call in others.
Notify neighbors?
Uh, no, we, we just have it on the agenda, because. Uh, no, we just have it on the agenda, because we're just, it's just fact finding, there's no hearing. And then, after we talk with them and see what's going on, then I think we can decide whether it's appropriate to have a.
Which is a key.
A larger meeting and what we're doing, and how much the road is involved with it, and so on.
Okay.
Okay? We, we have a note here from, from you, right? To Chiefs Bartlett, Galvin, Ricard, and Superintendent Clemmer, hosting meeting.
Yeah, National Grid has, keeps trying to get together all the emergency decision makers.
Gotcha. Yep, so they would, the National Grid Representative Scott Farrar would like to meet with that group.
Yeah, I said they can do it in my office, and if I can, I'll get them together, because they weren't, haven't been doing that. I don't know where that stands, I can follow up with that.
Okay, I think that's good. Right?
Yeah, he emailed me first, because he was my liaison with National Grid for Green Communities.
Mm-hmm, okay. This was, this is a note indicating that Representative Norton was coming in tonight, which I think we already know. Where are you on this fourteen?
I think this is old business.
Yeah, this was last week, last week. Which did not get dealt with at last week's meeting, because.
Got it. We, we have the selectmen, the specialty annual town meeting, yep. This is, we already talked about this. This is the note from town council regarding collections and procurement law. So, we'll just sort of churn through this.
Approval of the reserve fund transfer.
Yes, we have an approval of the reserve fund.
For fifty-seven hundred?
Transfer.
This was to turn off the heat and turn on the.
Yep. Failed actuator in the EMS. Okay.
Close in the P.O. box.
Yeah, close in the P.O. box, which we've talked about. The River Bridge Report to Victoria Maguire, which we've talked about.
Maybe a wingman here.
Hmm?
Will it be a wingman? Help you flip through that stuff?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, we already discussed that, actually, it's old. That's United Ways, just providing the towns with updated fifty-one A forms for cases.
Yep.
Invitation to the Greater Worcester Gins, which has already passed. Update on the House fiscal year, the House work on the budget.
Mm-hmm.
This is aged now.
Yep.
Charters divesting out of Berlin, and turning its customers over to Comcast. And that's just an update about that.
So that changing from, changing us from charter to Comcast is only going to happen if Comcast merges with Time Warner, right? So that's quite a ways away.
With, the cable advisory committee was originally tentatively chalked up for tonight, but they were, they're going to take our list of future meeting dates and determine what time they'd like to come in, after they have some more time to review that charter Comcast deal.
Does that affect, it must affect the negotiating with them.
Um, you're dealing with a different government relations person, but I bet you the process is pretty much identical.
Okay, we have here a request from the H. Wallace Woodward Post 162 to the Board of Selectmen. The Post would like permission to hold the parade on Monday, May twenty-sixth, the Memorial Day Parade, forming as usual at Berlin Memorial School at twelve forty-five, beginning with a short ceremony, and then the marching route is follows, South Street to Linden Street to Central Street to Cardo Street to Woodward Avenue to the old burial ground on Linden Street to continue the ceremony. In case of inclement weather, the service to be held at the Berlin Memorial School at one o'clock P.M. I would entertain a motion to.
I move that we grant permission to do that.
Can I second it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have CMR PC Legislative Breakfast on June sixth.
That's item J, if you're following along.
Yeah.
At Union Hall to Washington Square, Worcester, Mass.
When is that, June sixth?
June sixth, eight to ten, Union Hall, Washington Square.
Just a press release that they got, an EPA environmental merit award, this is Central Mass mosquito control project.
Alright. This is a note from MMA indicating that, well, this is out of date anyway, that was May eighth, so.
Didn't apply your wish.
This.
City and town update.
Oh yes, this is city and town update.
City and town update.
They are giving a, an applied concepts in municipal finance course.
I thought I might go to that. I don't, does it cost anything?
Is that the June fifth one?
Oh yeah, I'm thinking of June fifth.
The June fifth one is fifty dollars.
That's fifty dollars per person, yeah.
I'm looking to see.
This one, I don't think they give a date on it yet. When I, when I looked at it, it was.
Yeah, I'm not seeing a date.
Have they printed out a form for that too?
Yeah, because I don't, I don't see a date.
They hadn't final, it didn't look like they finalized.
No. MMPA Resources List, update on municipal unemployment insurance reform. Senate voted, technical changes within the unemployment system and increase the minimum wage, but does not include municipal unemployment insurance reforms included in the House bill, so. More to come there. We have a note here from the webmaster. And they have put up a couple of selectmen's meetings on the website.
I saw that.
Yeah, YouTube, yes.
Yes.
So it's up on the top title area, because I was looking for it under selectmen.
Top right corner, Berlin TV.
Yep.
Okay.
Anybody who's looking for.
Still working on the.
For everybody who's, you know, up late at night and bored with home shopping, they're online, right?
Well, there apparently are a lot of people that don't have cable TV.
Right, and you can fast forward and get to the agenda items that you really care about.
Yeah. If only we could do that during the meetings.
I was going to say that.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're still working on the Fire Master details.
Oh yes.
Whether the women's team can.
Can go with a rider?
Yep.
No?
No answer yet.
Okay. I can't believe they can't, I mean, because I know from business that there are times when you send people out on, you know, a sort of a training, and you get a rider for the, you know, on the, on the insurance to cover it.
They're not all necessarily firefighters.
I understand.
They're all associate members of the fire company, so they're trying to figure out if that's.
Okay. Alright.
Just confirming that they got the choices on the health and dental.
Okay. Actually see that. Okay, this is out of date. Oh yes, here it is, this is the dental. So this means that everyone has gotten.
That Maya is confirming that they received your, the choice, IAC's choices, the selectmen's vote.
Okay.
The form.
We have, very pretty, I like that, Walter.
Yeah, came up pretty good, didn't it?
Yeah, you want to say a couple of things about that?
I haven't seen.
Pictures are great.
He hasn't seen it.
Oh, it's great.
Yeah, but really.
That's the one, that's the one we had two years ago, isn't it? What's your date on it?
It says two thousand eleven through two thousand eighteen.
Oh, alright, yeah, we did it, yeah, I have it. It's, it's.
Pictures are nice.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of good information in it, but skip, I mean, you know, I think there's a little too much. A lot of stuff people don't need to read, but.
That's a fantastic young box turtle.
Yeah. No, it's a good read.
Yeah.
There's a lot of interesting statistics and things in it. I don't think so.
So if somebody wanted to read it.
I don't recognize, that'd pick a trail anywhere.
I can ask if it's out there as a PDF.
It would be good, because otherwise nobody could see it.
I think that, wasn't that just going around Gates Pond, maybe?
Maybe, oh, maybe, yeah.
But it looks, it looks kind of paved there.
Yeah, okay.
The town bylaws are now online.
The bylaws are online now?
The general bylaws.
I imagine it could be reduced to a PDF, I guess.
Yeah, the zoning bylaws and the subdivision rules and regs are close to being online.
Okay. We have a copy of Powderhouse Senior News.
Also starting to be online increasingly.
Which will, okay.
That's online now, that one.
So can Walter get a co, a PDF copy of that?
I'm going to ask.
We're going to check. Yeah, oh, the conservation thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll look into it, sure.
I'll ask, I'll ask him, I'll send him an email.
Well, he needs to know where to get it.
If he can send it to me, I can send it to Garth.
And there are some details here that came out Wednesday on the documentation required to accept the.
Church property?
Yeah. Ship church property.
Right. Is that on record now? Do you know?
Yes, you guys see.
Skip, I'm pretty sure Skip has filed it by now.
Okay.
This is the.
Oh yeah, the leaflets and so on.
Yeah.
Do you want to talk about that, or is that kind of?
Well, that's just, Walter, you asked where all that stuff with the Office of Campaign and Political Finance, and that's the U, if you will, U on page two of the agenda.
Yep.
The webmaster asked if he could get candidate information up on the website.
Oh, oh, that's how it started, yeah.
Yeah, that's how the ball started rolling. And the answer is, not unless it's equal access for everybody.
Right.
It was at the eleventh hour anyhow.
And no connection to fundraising.
No connection to fundraising, so we couldn't put a candidate's URL up there that links to a website that's raising money. Really, most towns don't do that, but he was curious to know why we don't.
We just haven't done it, and now we know.
And now cable access is going to be in the future, probably taping a debate or letting the candidates go for five minutes each or something, and.
That'd be nice.
Putting something up online.
Yeah, that's always, that's always been our policy. We invite both sides or all sides in an election. If one wants to present, we request the others, whoever are interested.
Okay. A brochure for the Union Consortium of State Labor Relations Agencies meeting. We have a letter of certification received from.
This has been something the school's been looking for, a certification that there's no asbestos at BMS.
Yep.
There it is.
Yep, from Charles M. Hay of Tapepe Associates, who were the architects on the, on the school certifying there was no asbestos containing materials specified or used in the construction of Berlin Memorial School.
Since it was illegal at that time.
Yeah, it would seem.
ZBA will meet with.
Oh yes, with Sawyer Hill, mm-hmm.
On the fourteenth.
That's Wednesday, right?
Thursday is the fourteenth, right?
Oh. Today's the twelfth.
Oh yeah, no, it's Wednesday, yep.
At eight fifteen.
Okay.
There is a copy of the community survey for the library, which I understand was available at the polls today.
At the polls, it's also online on the library's website, which can be accessed at the town's website, so it's online Survey Monkey.
Okay.
They really would like people to do it online, it's easier to tabulate.
I imagine.
Than doing the paper ones, but whichever way. The surveys are available at the clerk's office and also at the library.
Okay, so it's on the, at the library section of the website?
Correct.
Okay. And we have copies of the proceedings at the special town meeting of May fifth, two thousand fourteen, and the annual town meeting of May fifth, two thousand fourteen, certified by the town clerk. Can anybody remember getting out of there before ten o'clock?
No, that was amazing.
Yeah.
This is more an election year.
Yeah, that's, we just, we just talked about that. There's an annual meeting of the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission at the Grill at the Westboro Country Club, five thirty to eight thirty, Thursday, June twelfth.
Larry's noting that some of the Benderson stated amounts on what the project costs are are being understated.
Okay.
So he's just pushing back and saying to include all costs. That's just a copy for your information.
Okay, and these are items that have been left off the project cost calculation?
That were left off the project, yeah, he actually found an application that had the, all the original values, and then it was all whited out, and underneath the whiteout was the higher number, so. He was able to hold up the light and see what they originally, was all the, all the materials included and et cetera, so.
Great.
They also informed him today, that's why the clerk push is kind of coming up upon us, is that they, all those tenant fit outs that you've seen on Facebook that they're talking about, they want to pull them all or have them all pulled by August first. You can't hire the clerk until July first. So the sooner you have the job description nailed down and then post it.
Mm-hmm.
To hire, yeah, interview people and get ready for July one, the better. He's warned them, he.
They're coming in next week, right?
Who's that?
The inspector.
Nineteen, yes.
Yes. Well, let's try to nail it down then.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, except for the land use board's feedback, which, you know, I've got to draft, find it, draft it. I know, at least get their feedback.
Let's get their feedback.
Okay.
I mean, we can make it general enough for the boards, and I'm sure will be okay. There's notes of the PAC meeting, May thirteenth. Oh, this is the agenda, not notes, I'm thinking now.
Actually, the minutes of the last meeting.
Minutes of like, sorry, minutes of the last meeting, and note, agenda for May thirteenth. I thought they are really efficient, it's May twelfth when they have their minutes out, on May twelfth.
That's not possible.
Yep, okay. This is.
Oars.
Oh, Oars, Organization of the Assavet River, annual meeting, Monday, May nineteenth, at Severy Grange Hall, seven thirty to nine.
And he gave away the, the letter to Governor Patrick, the MACC, so that, that's out of.
Yep, which we talked about.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
And there's also Skip Duggan about the gas pipeline.
Yep. I think this is just sort of more, isn't more of what we were talking about, so.
Well, he's the most southern, most poignant town, I guess. He was the last one that Philip Chipman visited.
Uh-huh.
Right, it's Skip's own property.
Yeah, I mean, it does seem to go into the Ager Woods after that, a conservation land, but I think he's the last private landowner.
Yep. And of course into the Aega parcel.
Yeah. Okay.
Mass Development's hosting something.
Who's this?
Mass Development.
Man, it's almost impossible to tell who some of these things come from. Oh, Mass Development, okay. A, a.
June fourth, Economic Development Center, just an invitation.
Okay.
And originally on the scheduled site was going to be Reserve Fund Transfer Request for Short Term Chapter Ninety Borrowing, but now the treasurer thinks he can cover that, so that's what that, that's saying.
Okay. Okay, and then.
Last one for Walter.
Walter?
Today's story about craft breweries in central Massachusetts.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I'll, I'll send that to, there was one, there was one in Saturday's paper too, I mean, that's all you're reading about.
They left Hudson out, because Hudson has two, right? Or they're going to have a second, they have the Flat Trail.
No, Rail Trail's not a brewery. It's a.
Just a.
It's flatbread.
Sells a lot of beer.
It sells a lot, and they do a lot of local craft, they sell them, but they don't make them there. But they're, they're.
There is a micro, I thought there was one going in.
There is one going in.
The old Lotte Barnes.
Yeah.
to it and she met with little cooperation from the.
Recreation.
Recreation Committee on it. So I don't know. I asked her if she would just send some specific information. She said there are towns that have voted, no chemical-free towns or something, but I, so I asked if it just gave me some more information, but when a, when a kid has a reaction when they spray the fields, it just seems so they are, be a little more sensitive to it and spray it during the off-playing season, if that makes sense. Maybe it doesn't make sense, I don't know.
I did hear from Robert McKay today about the fields. And he said that he just found out from her too, that apparently the school uses those fields.
Yeah.
And not for recreation, but during, in school activities. Said she asks to be notified whenever she's spraying. And he said he would ask the company to flag it, but she wants greater response, you know.
What do they, what do they spray it with? I mean, do we?
It's for, no, just fertilizer. It's treatment. She doesn't want her child to play on chemically treated grass. I think it's the fertilizer treatment.
Well, we should probably talk about it. I mean, maybe there's a way of doing it at the fall, at the very end of the season or something, when nobody's going to use it for several weeks or.
Yeah, yep.
Well, I asked if she would.
He did say he'd make himself available to come in if you all wanted to meet with him.
Who was that, McKay?
Rob McKay.
Rob McKay.
Oh, McKay, okay, okay.
Well, you should bring him in.
Oh, that'd be good that he mentioned it, because she didn't think he was getting any satisfaction. Yeah, could you bring him in?
Yeah.
That would be good.
Next week, maybe, or I'll see what his availability is with that.
Tell him to find out what options.
Right.
Are available for field spraying besides chemicals. I mean, we've got plenty of manure in town.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe we could hold a couple of meetings down there. But as I say, I mean, even, even if some measure of chemical was used, if it were perhaps used at, you know, at the end of the season in, you know, late October, early November, so that everything would have a chance to degrade and dissipate.
Anything else?
No.